Here?
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Novick.
Here.
Assistant State Attorney Ralph Gwanni.
Here.
City Planner Ramon O'Nellis.
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda after row call is a public comment. Any member of the audience is permitted to speak for three minutes on any item either on the agenda or off the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a three-minute presentation? State your name, please, and your address.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, Lisa Marie Presley, John Benay Ramsey, John Steele, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to let you know I'm still eating, of course, at the mission. I have no money except for a little tiny check that I'm living off of, and it's U.S. Treasury because I'm also an entertainer and I'm also a singer. And they're stealing that money from me, too. They're stealing my payroll checks because they need to steal my job. Also, I just wanted to let you know at the mission I am the only U.S.-born that is being served there. I do need their assistance. I do need their help. And the rest of them are all on death row. Now, they also need, you know, like assistance for a place to live, but they need it for free. And they have a prayer house, and they have guns stashed inside the prayer house, and rifles, and bombs, and grenades inside that prayer house, and they have not cleaned it up lately. I know somebody, I think it was the military, that went inside that house and grabbed all the guns that they could find. But now it's filled again. And these people do carry them over to the Sundance where I live at the motel. I'm in room 134. And I've been at the Sundance motel now for about six months off and on because we have checkout time, so I have to go outside. And he said this month you won't have to have checkout. You can just stay in until your check arrives. Excuse me. And so I just wanted to let you know, death row from the mission, they have no place to live. They never pay their rent, so they're always begging for a place to live. But they have to shoot us down so we don't have to say nothing to anybody else that they are, that they do not live here. The purpose is because if they cannot get a job, they cannot work here. If they cannot, they can steal payroll checks too and steal jobs from the U.S.-born. That's the only way they can live.
Ma'am, that's your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Anyone else in the audience that has an item they'd like to talk about on or off the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to item four, approval of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see if we could take a couple items earlier than number eight, put in front of number nine, number 10. Appears like number eight will take a little more presentation, maybe a little more time.
Is there a...
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All right, we'll change the agenda so that when we get to the item what would have been item eight, we'll take nine and 10 in front of eight, and then move to eight and subsequently 11 and so forth. Is, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number five, approval of the minutes. We are approving two meetings, the December 1st and the January 19th meeting. So I need two separate motions.
Mr. Chair.
I recommend we go ahead and pass the minutes for December 1st as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm going to abstain on this vote since I was not at the December 1st meeting.
I will abstain also.
Commissioner Sanders will be abstaining as well. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'll make a motion to approve the January 19, 2012 minutes.
Is there a second?
I second.
And, Mr. Chair, I'm going to abstain on that one because I wasn't there.
And I'm going to abstain on that one because I wasn't there.
Very good. Thank you.
You're good.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Thank you. This is approved. Any announcements or committee reports?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any informational items?
None, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to item number nine, the PCN 11030 Sparks Marina RV Park LC from Maverick Inc. Mr. Rundle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission Jim Rundle, Senior Planner, here to present final handbook request from Maverick and on part of the Sparks Marina LLC. Tonight's agenda item asks the Planning Commission considering final approval of the amendments to the plan development handbook for the Sparks Marina. The Nevada state law and the Sparks Municipal Code require that once a handbook has received tentative approval from the Sparks Planning Commission, from a Planning Commission and a city council, that it come back through for final approval. Essentially, what the final approval process is doing is to ensure that comments that were required have been implemented into the final handbook, as the final handbook will ultimately be the document recorded as the zoning document for that piece of land. I'll put up a quick aerial photo. I'll put up an aerial photo and describe it quickly anyway. The photo's not quick. The amendments that the Planning Commission approved in December were to allow for some design flexibility for construction of this site here. As the Planning Commission may remember, they did not approve any entitlement to construct anything at that site. It was just some design flexibility for the handbook. If anything is desired to be constructed there, a special use permit would be required, and the Planning Commission would be looking at a special use permit to allow for construction at that site. I submit a staff's opinion that the final handbook is in substantial conformance with the final handbook, and we are recommending the Planning Commission find it in substantial conformance. And that concludes my presentation.
Any question for Mr. Rundle? I'll entertain a motion.
Are you prepared?
Go ahead.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of PCN 11030 as the final draft is in substantial compliance with the city council's action on the tentative approval of the Marina Landing Plan Development Handbook and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in this staff report.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number nine, red, PCN 06028, red development. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners. For the record, Tim Thompson, Senior Planner. Before you tonight is a request to approve architectural elevations at the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development. Back in 2009, the Planning Commission approved elevations for Pad 13. At that time, there were no tenants identified for that building. It was intended to be a pad building, a multiple tenant building. If I could have the overhead, please, Janet. Pad 13 is located to the northeast of the large roundabout. There is now a tenant that is interested in locating in this particular building, and they have requested some modifications to the architectural elevations, hence the review of these new elevations. Staff has reviewed the elevations and believe that they are consistent with the architecture that currently exists within the development and does meet the design standards within the Plan Development Handbook, and we recommend that you approve these, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have one for Tim. How much of a change was made?
I knew that would be the answer.
And he's got the answer right there.
Right there.
I don't think this computer is on. Is this on?
Well, was it like, do you have a...
They're different, and we felt that they were a substantial enough difference that it required review by the Planning Commission again. I was hoping that we were going to have this because I was going to show you so you could see the difference.
But I'm saying there was no really objection from staff about any of the changes. I mean, they weren't that drastic to where...
In fact, I would venture to say that these...
Someone coming right behind you.
These new elevations are probably...
Better.
More, there's more articulation associated with these elevations than what was approved previously.
More color, too, I think.
Yeah.
And that's all I have, Tim.
Yeah, I think they look very nice.
Any other questions?
Motion.
Anyone want a motion?
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead. Go ahead. Okay, let me make a motion. I move to approve the architectural building elevations for Pad 13, Zone B, fulfillment of the requirements set forth in the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 06028. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
You'd be a nice addition.
All right, we are back on the schedule, calling for item eight, which is a public hearing item. Ms. Melby?
Good evening, planning commissioners. Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you tonight are two applications for the Crest Gate Pyramid Plan Development. As you can see in the aerial, I've outlined the property. It's located basically on the southwest corner of Pyramid and McCarran. The first quest before you tonight is a master plan amendment to change the land use designation from office professional to general commercial. The general commercial land use designation is an appropriate designation and a logical extension of the existing GC, which is for the shopping center on the corner of Pyramid and McCarran. Based on the four master plan findings, staff is recommending approval of the master plan amendment to the, the master plan amendment to general commercial. The second, the suggested motion is on page two of the staff report. The second request before you tonight is the application, the applicant is requesting to amend the recorded plan development for Crest Gate Pyramid. There are four areas in the plan development. And what I've done is taken the map from the handbook and outlined it. The pink area is Area 1. The green area represents Areas 2. The orange outlined area is 3, and the blue is 4. I mean, yeah, blue is 4. Area 1 and Area 2 are built out. Area 1 has the, I believe it's an auto zone. It's an auto, a parts dealer. And then there's offices in Area 2. The request tonight is to change the uses in Areas 3 and 4. The applicant is also requesting to amend the handbook and take out senior housing. Right now, in the recorded handbook in Area 2, that was an option of doing offices or senior housing. They're requesting to remove that. Staff believes that senior housing is a viable option for this property, however, it being located near shopping and also near transit. However, staff can make the findings support options 1 and 3, which I will discuss in more detail in a minute. The proposed handbook, or the amendment to the handbook proposes three options. And what I wanted to do is briefly go through these three options so you can fully understand them, since to understand these options is important to understand what staff is recommending. The first option proposes approximately 75,000 square feet of offices in Area 3. And then also, you, there's an option of offices in Area 4 or also a low-volume commercial. Staff is recommending approval of this option, and I will go through the findings in a minute. The second option is Option 2. And in this option, the applicant is proposing 71,800 square feet of personal storage units with a 2,500-square-foot office and caretaker unit on the second floor. This often, this option also permits a one acre of RV storage, which would be in Area 4. This is only, the RV storage is only permitted if the personal storage is constructed. Staff is not recommending approval of this option, which I will explain when I go through the findings. The third option is it places three office buildings along Roberta Lane and then two offices within Area 4. The balance of the property would be approximately 38,700 square feet of personal storage and also include the 2,500 square feet of the caretaker and office for the operation of the storage units. There are other amendments in the handbook also that are proposed. They include changes to the signs, landscaping, architectural standards, which reflect also the proposed amendments by these three options. The applicant does not propose any changes to the existing areas for the offices or standards for the offices. The Crest Gate Pyramid Plan Development has been developing over the years as a tree-lined street consisting of residential-scale professional offices. Here's some pictures of, that I took last week of the streetscapes of Roberta Lane. It's a staff opinion that Option 3 maintains the integrity of the plan development by placing office buildings along Roberta Lane with the personal storage behind. Option 3 will not depart from, let me put this back up. This is Option 3 again. Option 3 would not depart from the density, which is PD finding 6, or the bulk PD finding 7, of the approved plan development by putting the enclosed storage development behind the office buildings along Roberta, nor does it change the zoning standards for the area, which is PD finding 8 of the recorded plan development. The only common space in Crest Gate is the open, is the landscaped areas. The Plan Development Handbook requires 22% landscaping for the offices, while the storage is proposing 15% for landscaping. The offices along Roberta Lane keeps the residential character and openness along Roberta Lane, which is consistent, or staff can support PD findings 10, 11, and 12. Option 3 is estimated to generate less traffic than all, I mean, it's to generate less traffic than what's been approved with all offices. However, it would generate more traffic than if it was the storage. Staff's comment is that this would change the character of traffic that would be going in and out of on Roberta Lane because you'd have larger vehicles like, with the RVs and people bringing stuff to the storage units, which is supporting Option 3 supports finding PD 14. Option 3 has the offices which are surrounded by landscaping or open parking lots, open to the public, while all this, the all-storage option, or Option 2, creates two enclosed areas, which keeps a semblance of existing nature, that Option 3 keeps the semblance of the existing streetscape. Option 3 also sustains the transitional function of Crest Gate, which is consistent with PD findings 16, 17, and 19. And finally, defining the efficiency of the land use, which is PD finding 3, as the fiscal impact of land development on the city, the proposed self-storage would generate lower general fund revenue, as discussed in the fiscal impact analysis, which assessed two options. And PD finding 3, developing the remaining acreage with only storage units will, in comparison to the office or senior housing, as discussed in the fiscal impact analysis, result in lower property taxes revenues over the period of the analysis. It is staff's opinion that this makes Option 3 a more efficient land use with a beneficial fiscal impact to the city. In discussing Option 2, in contrast, Option 2 changes the integrity of the plan development by altering the streetscape by having two enclosed developments along Roberta Lane of the personal storage and the RV storage. It creates two areas that are closed off to the public access compared to the offices, which are open with no restriction to the access. The amount of common area landscaping is reduced with this, with all the, all storage or Option 2, from 22% to 15%. The traffic generation is estimated to be less, but the type of traffic would be different, consisting of larger vehicles, RVs, and trucks pulling trailers, which do not typically use Roberta Lane currently. It's staff opinion that the personal storage and RV storage are a less efficient land use resulting in a reduced financial benefit to the city, as supported by the fiscal impact analysis, which concluded that over 20 years, over the 20-year period, the office would generate greater total revenues than the personal storage use. This results in lower property tax revenue over the analysis period. Based on the PD findings, staff is recommending Options 1 and 3 be permitted in the handbook and not permit Option 2, which is the all-storage option. Staff is offering two motions on page 2 in my staff report for the tentative approval of the Plan Development Handbook to provide options for the Planning Commission. In the first motion, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission forward a tentative approval to city councils for Options 1 and 3 in the Plan Development Handbook. With the alternative motion, the Planning Commission would forward a tentative approval to city council of the Plan Development Handbook, as requested by the applicant, permitting all three options. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be glad to answer any questions or concerns.
Are there any questions?
May I ask a...
Absolutely.
For clarification, I know I've been doing this forever, but I need to remember, whenever we would send on to the council, no matter what we decided to do, at that point, can they change it then, or do they send it back to us if they didn't like what we were sending forward to the council? Could...
The city council would have the option to remand it back to Planning Commission if they didn't agree with your decision, or they could just overturn your decision.
Okay, they can just overturn it. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Commissioner Melby?
A question for the applicant.
Any other question for Ms. Melby? No, okay. We're good. Thank you. Is the applicant or applicant's representative here? Yeah, we're opening the public hearing, but we'll hear from the applicant first and then the general public.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ken Crater, representing Sycamore Gardens, the owner of the project. Would you like to ask your question first, or I can give my presentation first? Might answer your question.
Yeah, go ahead then, Ken. That's fine.
I'd like to start with a little project history. This project has been around a long time, in fact, since 1995. When we first started out, I've been involved in this project since day one, too. We originally looked at apartments about 15 years ago, and we quickly learned that the neighbors are strongly opposed to apartments. Thus, we had a first neighborhood meeting to determine what their concerns were, and found out those concerns are as follows. Traffic impacts, a big issue with traffic impacts, both to their neighborhood as well as area streets, including congestion on Pyramid. They're very concerned about school impacts, the overcrowded schools. It's a large, established residential neighborhood, and they're very concerned about their schools and their quality of life, and also their peaceful enjoyment. So based on that neighborhood meeting, we kind of went back to the drawing board and ultimately approved, or attained approval of a 52-lot, single-family residential subdivision. During this process, the owners, who are Sycamore Gardens, sold the portion of the land abutting Pyramid McCarran to Wall Street Properties, who developed the Sparks Mercantile Center where the Rayleigh Shopping Center now exists. So they maintained the land back behind the shopping center off of Roberta Lane. Over time, the owners determined that there was not enough value in doing single-family residential based on what they paid for the property, so we looked at other alternatives based on what the issues with the neighborhood were, and thought that senior apartments might be a good option because they have no impacts to schools, far less traffic impacts than normal apartments, and would hopefully help them maintain the quality of life. So we had another neighborhood meeting, went back and presented our plans, and knew the neighbors were still concerned with all their original issues, but they were also concerned now with pedestrian access to the shopping center. Once they knew, and once the shopping center started developing, they wanted to be able to take an easy walk through our property to the shopping center instead of having to hop in their car and drive all the way around the block. And we understood that concern, and there was no reason why they shouldn't be able to continue accessing the shopping center through our project. They were also very concerned about the building heights and setbacks, and they didn't want the senior apartments abutting right up against their property. So based on that input, we submitted a plan development handbook for senior apartments with offices along Roberta Lane to provide a buffer from the existing single-family residential homes and the senior apartments. So over time, the owners began to develop offices along Roberta, as well as the auto parts store at the corner of Roberta and Pyramid. They took great care in doing a quality development and continuing to address the neighborhood concerns as they want, as they went. They realized that there was more demand at that time for offices than senior housing, so we submitted an amendment to the PD handbook to allow either senior housing or two-story offices on this Area 3, right in here. And that, again, is the portion of the property that is currently vacant. They ultimately completed Phase 1 and Phase 2, which meant that we now have professional offices along the entire exterior boundary of Roberta Lane that buffers the existing single-family homes within the adjoining neighborhood. However, as we all know, our awful recession has hit, and several things have resulted from that. One, office vacancies have increased dramatically. In fact, the current office vacancy rate from the most recent data I could find, the end of the second quarter 2011, was around 26%, a huge number. Also, there have been two huge senior housing projects built in Spanish Springs that I'm sure you're familiar with. That would be the Bonaventure and Cascade Living Group. And I also do my own development, and I have a senior housing project I'm working on. And through this, I've learned that the vacancy rate in that Bonaventure and Cascade Living Group exceeds 50%. It's awful. And the absorption in those facilities is extremely slow. Also recently, I took a trip around to some other senior housing projects and visited one, the Arbers, which is by the Northern Nevada Medical Center. And things are so bad from them. They have rooms that were designed for two people. They're putting three people in a room, in a room designed for two, because they can't... room, in a room designed for two because they can't get the rents that they normally could in good time. So the economy has had a huge impact on senior housing as well as offices. Based on what the current vacancy rates are, if you assumed a three percent increase in rentals per year in offices, it would take about seven years just to get to a healthy rate where you could even consider new construction of offices. So the current status of the project, phase one and two are complete, but the developers unable to move forward with the existing vacant land with either offices or senior housing for at least five years, if not longer. Also, the vacant land has created tremendous problems with crime, graffiti, vandalism, and vagrants. They've had broken windows throughout, illegal camping, there's been a gentleman that was trying to live in his RV on the vacant land that took a while to get the sheriff to evict him, constant graffiti, and just recently, they had over eighty thousand dollars in damage. Somebody went in on a weekend and stole eighty thousand dollars of copper wire out of thirteen air conditioning units because there is no presence on the weekend in that project. Thus, the owners knew they had to look at another option. So the new plans, after much thought, is that personal storage would be a great use, the highest and best use of the land, given the current state of the economy. It also addresses all the original concerns of the neighborhood, traffic, school impacts, quality of life, pedestrian impacts. It has some good things, too. There'd be a full-time live-in manager that would greatly help reduce crime and graffiti and prevent vandalism by having a twenty-four-hour presence on the property on nights and weekends. Also, we would have a security system that includes video surveillance that will benefit the adjoining neighborhood, as we all know that crime tends to spread to surrounding areas. We recently had another neighborhood meeting to present our idea and gather input and comments. The neighbors in attendance seemed satisfied that the project would be a good fit with the neighborhood, but of course, had some additional comments and concerns that we've since addressed. Based on their input, we made these following changes to the handbook. We put in the handbook that there will be the full-time manager for the personal storage facility, and also the owners intend that this person will also oversee the management and maintenance of the entire Crestgate Pyramid project. So you'll now have someone on there twenty-four hours a day to deal with any issue in either the offices, auto parts store, or the personal storage. We also put in a provision that we must install an iron gate at the Galtway entrance. There's two entrances into the project from the adjoining neighborhood. One is down Holman Way, there's an existing iron gate at this point where pedestrians can walk through, but it prohibits vehicles. Well, there was never any provision to do the same thing at Galt, so we're going to put that same type gate there to prohibit vehicles but allow that pedestrian flow to be maintained. Also, only legal and licensed RVs may be stored in the facility, which will limit the length of RVs to forty feet per Nevada state law, which is a concern of the neighborhood. Also, there'll be no maintenance allowed in the personal storage or the RV storage facility, no residing in either of those storage facilities, and we also limited the hours of operation from six AM to seven PM Monday to Saturday and seven AM to six PM Sunday. We've also had some follow-up with the neighbors after our neighborhood meeting, and there's a couple more comments we made since then. One is that the manager and staff will assist the RV owners to safely park and remove their vehicle from the storage facility. We've all seen our neighbors proudly display their new boat, and they go to back it into their driveway, and they've never done it before, and it's a challenge to them, so we'll have people on staff that can go out and assist them to make sure they get that vehicle backed in safely and pull out safely. Also, we're going to put in the handbook that that video surveillance will be installed, so it's not just talk, but it's action. I'd also like to discuss quickly the ownership, because I think this is important. Crestgate Pyramid has had the same owners that originally purchased the property, which is Sycamore Gardens. And tonight in the audience are Mark Lynn and Jeff Lynn, who are the owners. And also, I'd like to put out my condolence to the family, as Mark's dad, Sam Lynn, recently passed away, and I think some of you may remember him. He was a great guy, and he'll surely be missed. The Linds hold developments for the long term, they don't sell their projects. The company also has substantial experience in managing personal storage and RV storage facilities, and they take great pride in both the development and maintenance of their project, as evidenced by Crestgate Pyramid. Because of all this, we feel that the neighborhood in general is satisfied with the project that's proposed and including the changes that we made in response to the recent input. The Len family has lived up to their commitments and has been very responsive to the issues that have been raised in the neighborhood. The owners propose to develop the remaining vacant portion of the land with personal and RV storage, will maintain the same quality, high quality of architecture, landscaping, and the overall quality of the project, and consistent with the PD handbook, again, with minimal traffic impacts, no impact to schools, concerned with and address the safety of the neighborhood, and a key, and that is maintaining a sound buffer between the existing residences and the shopping center. And again, it's important to point out, all these offices that ring Roberta Lane and lie adjacent to existing homes have been developed, so the buffer of those offices is already in place. The personal storage will be the second buffer behind the offices, so you'll have two buffers between the residents and the neighborhood. Now, I'd just like to comment on some of the findings. PD three, the plan is consistent with the objective of furthering the public health, safety morals, and general welfare by providing for the more efficient use of land and public or private services. We would all love to have a thriving office and senior housing market, but should a developer who has always lived up to their commitments and developed as much of a high-quality project as financially possible be punished due to the greed on Wall Street and incompetence in Washington and prohibited from developing a project that addresses neighborhood concerns and maintains a high-quality project? The proposed project is a very efficient use of the land and furthers the public health by dealing with crime, graffiti, and vandalism problems. PD four, the plan is consistent with the objective of furthering the public health, safety morals, and general welfare by providing for changes in technology of land development so that the resulting economies may be available to those in need of homes. And as I've discussed, there is no senior housing market in the city of Sparks right now, it just makes absolutely no sense to even consider that as a use in this point in time. PD seven, the plan does not depart from zoning and subdivision regulations otherwise applicable to the property, and these departures are in the public interest for bulk. Again, garden offices already exist along the vast majority of the public portion of Roberta Lane and do abut the existing single-family homes, along with extensive landscaping plan for the personal storage facility, ensure that the existing character of the planned development will be maintained. Furthermore, development of the personal and RV storage facilities will once and for all eliminate the weeds, graffiti, crime, and vandalism that are certainly not in character with the PD handbook. PD eight, the plan does depart from zoning and subdivision regulations otherwise applicable to the property, and these departures are in the public interest for use. Professional and garden-style offices that are residential in character are, again, a hundred percent complete, adjacent to existing older homes in the adjoining residential neighborhood. Personal storage units will not lie adjacent to existing homes. PD ten, common open space in the planned development exists for what purpose, is located there within the project and comprises how many acres or what percentage of development as the site taken as a whole? In PD fifteen, the plan does provide for the furtherance of access to light, air, recreation, and visual enjoyment. While the percentage of landscaping is reduced with the planned project as compared to the office, all the landscaping within the project will be located along Roberta Lane, including a large landscaped area at the existing cul-de-sac bowl in this area right here, such as the residential of the character of Roberta Lane is maintained and the public will be able to enjoy all of that landscaping. PD fourteen, the plan does provide control over vehicle or traffic. Although there will be larger vehicles on Roberta, the overall magnitude decrease in traffic volume, which is one-sixth as much traffic that would be generated by office within area three and four, will negate any noticeable change in the character of traffic. Furthermore, motorists have the access of coming in from McCarron through the existing shopping center and not even having to drive on Roberta Lane, so traffic impacts will be absolutely negligible. PD sixteen, the relationship of the proposed planned development to the neighborhood in which it's proposed to be established is beneficial. The proposed new iron gate at Galtway entrance will allow pedestrian access but prohibit vehicles. This will further the intent of the PD handbook, and again, graffiti, crime, and vandalism will be largely eliminated. PD seventeen, to the extent the plan proposed development over a number of years, the terms and conditions intended to protect the interests of the public residents and owners of the planned development in the integrity of the plan are sufficient. The existing garden-style offices again provide the desired buffer that is residential in character, and the transition from office to personal storage will provide a further peaceful buffer that generates minimal traffic, no school impact, provides for a safe neighborhood, and provides for a beautiful and attractive landscaping area along the remaining undeveloped portion of Roberta Lane. And finally, PD twenty-one, modification of the Crestgate Pyramid planned development furthers the interest of the city and the residents and preserves the integrity of the plan. Personal storage will generate much-needed revenue right now, today. Will create construction jobs as well as some permanent jobs, along with the provision of needed services to the city of Sparks in twenty-twelve and not having to wait five, seven years or longer. Otherwise, weeds, crime, and vandalism will remain for at least five years, if not longer, until an office market returns. As the planned development will survive in perpetuity, when the useful life of the storage facility ends, the owners will still be allowed to construct offices at that time. Roberta Lane will remain residential in character, given the vast majority of the street is already developed with offices, and a substantial amount of landscaping will be installed along the remaining undeveloped portion, including the substantial landscaped area at the existing cul-de-sac bowl. The landscaping will be professionally maintained and will include a substantial number of trees greatly in excess of the minimum code requirements. And again, traffic as previously discussed will be negligible, just one-sixth that of compared to the allowed offices. In conclusion, we feel that all the required findings can be made in support of the approval of the developer's proposed project to allow options one and three, an area of three, in the handbook, including the RV storage, and that the project that's proposed can be recommended for approval to the city council. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
By God, Ken, you did answer my question.
All right.
What was your question?
It was about with the demand, I thought, for senior housing, and I was asking why you wanted to pull that out, but you answered it.
Okay.
But I do have some, if there's anybody else, I need to make some. I want to give my take on the findings, the planned development findings. I think option three, first of all, the economy, I think, is starting to get better, personally. And you can see it all over the country, for one thing, so I don't think it's stagnant. Option three reserves a portion of the site for office use, which would increase revenues for the city, and that's what we're looking out for, is revenue for the city. Plan development two, PD two, maintaining the office buildings along Roberta Lane and the personal storage behind would help maintain the residential character of Crestgate Pyramid planned development. PD six, option three, the proposed amendment would provide for some additional employment and better maintain the character of this planned development when compared to option two, all storage. Option three places a fortified personnel storage behind office buildings along Roberta Lane, maintaining the residential nature of Roberta Lane. PD eight, development standards establish increased setbacks, height and lightning restrictions for the buildings placed abutting the single-family homes. Option three maintains the office buildings along Roberta Lane, keeping its office residential nature. It also puts the personal storage adjacent to the shopping center buffered by offices. Option two, all storage, locate storages, uses near family residence. PD twelve, option three places offices along Roberta Lane with the personal storage behind the office buildings, which provides a more adequate open space landscape than option two. PD sixteen, Crestgate Pyramid has been developing as an office complex with a residential type appearance, providing office space for smaller offices. Option three, which situates the personal storage between the adjacent shopping center and additional office buildings, provides for a good transition between uses. PD seventeen, the standards in the handbook are written to minimize the impacts on the surrounding area and the neighbors. Option two, all storage, changes the integrity of the plan by allowing a land use that is entirely different than previously proposed. The personal and RV storage will alter the professional office character of the area. And PD nineteen, the Crestgate Pyramid planned development is designed to be a transitional land use between the shopping center and traffic on Pyramid Highway and the single-family homes to the south and west. Maintaining offices along Roberta Lane, placing the personal storage behind the office buildings, precluding RV storage, option three, will help sustain the transitional role of the area. That's what I got.
Other questions for the applicant's representative? Thank you. Art?
Yeah.
I have a question. It seems like the two options that we're going to consider here tonight, the staff's recommendations and your proposals, the major difference, obviously, is the size of the storage unit, units behind there. Was there any discussion with staff about continuing the offices on the east-west portion of Roberta Lane and essentially having a compromise by having the storage unit replace what would have been the two buildings on the north-south portion after you make the turn around the?
Corner there, you mean this area right here, area four?
Yes, yeah. No, no, I'm talking about the?
Oh, when you make the corner at the cul-de-sac bowl?
Yes, yes.
So you're saying, do an office here, for example, but allow the storage units here?
Yeah, was that a discussion?
I think we probably had that general discussion, probably no specific discussion. But when we first presented this project, we came forward with option two because we hadn't really done our homework yet, but then, doing the marketing work and the feasibility studies, we figured out that the personal storage is only feasible if we develop this entire area. Otherwise, it's too small to be able to compete with other storage facilities, given the amount of infrastructure and the cost to build that. So that's when we presented the option to build one-hundred percent of the area's personal storage. It's really the financially feasible project. So, for example, if we were approved with only the option to buffer it with office, you'd just have something sitting there again for a long time because it wouldn't be feasible to move forward with the storage, and it's certainly not feasible to move with the office at this time.
I understand, but with the original drawing that Karen showed, the plans would have called for one additional office on the east-west portion before you get to the roundabout, and then the two offices. And I understand the concept of that those are years away at this point.
Right.
But if you only had one that needed to be built, obviously, it's less years away than three.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Just curious whether that was part of the conversation.
Yeah, we did look at all those different options.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant's representative? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Are there folks in the audience that would like to come forward and make comments on this presentation? Come on down. I would ask that when you get here, have a seat and give us your name and your address, please, and then you have three minutes to make a comment on the proposed motions.
I'm in Phelps, I live at twenty-ninety-one Holman Way. And I have a question about the large vehicles that they want to put on that portion of the property. I don't know how many of you go out Pyramid Way. I go to Pyramid a lot, and it is just very painful. And you have to make a left turn on Roberta Lane, across one lane of traffic, and I don't see how you can take a vehicle in from McCarron because it's a very sharp drive into there. And I don't know how they're going to get those very big vehicles in and out of that area. I'm very disturbed about that. And there was something about it would be closed at six o'clock at night on Sunday?
Yes.
What are people going to do when they come home from camping and they've got a great big trailer? They're going to want to park their trailer, or whatever it is, in the parking lot. And so what is going to happen then?
Okay. Anything else, ma'am?
This is my biggest concern because the traffic on Pyramid and McCarron are just horrendous, and I just can't see having those great big vehicles trying to go into that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public that would like to?
Oh, you got to fill in.
Yeah, there's a little card, if you can just fill it out, so we can have a record of your presentation, please. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this topic? If not, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Before you make a motion, Commissioner Lee, well, two things. I think we need, we're going to need a motion on the master plan amendment, and then, assuming that passes, then we'll need whatever motion you choose to make on the?
Second.
On the second item. I'd like to just, for the? Uh, I'd like to just, um, for the public record, disclose that I am a tenant in this, uh, in this, uh, uh, group of offices and have been for 10 years, uh, and I don't think there's any reason that I will, uh, that disqualifies me from either voting or commenting on this issue, but I am a tenant in the, in the project.
Um, also, I'd like to say I actually met with the applicant and, and met with Ken also out, out at the project, but, thank you.
Did, yeah, did we want to just clarify her questions, just so that she understands? So we don't just close it without answering? Could we ask Ken to come up and address that?
Absolutely, yes. We're open.
Thank you. Um, yes, first, the issue with large vehicles is Holman, or, uh, Roberta Lane is a public street to the end of the cul-de-sac bowl, and it was designed for fire trucks, which is obviously a large vehicle, um, both in size as well as its turning radius, and also as you head down, um, from the cul-de-sac bowl on the private section of the street... Jenna, can you...
Let me put that up.
Yeah. Sorry, thank you. And then as you head from the cul-de-sac bowl north on the private street, that is also designed for fire department vehicles all the way around back into the shopping center. So there's no issue at all as far as large vehicles getting in and out of that area, and that includes that left turn pocket, the northbound to westbound left turn pocket from Pyramid onto Roberta Lane. That was also designed to accommodate single-unit vehicles, fire trucks, et cetera. So there won't be any issue at all with large vehicles getting in and out of here. And as I said earlier, a large portion of the volume of traffic for this facility would come in from McCarran, which is certainly designed for those larger vehicles. As you know, there's a right-in, right-out, and a left-in, uh, from McCarran into the Sparks Mercantile Shopping Center, and from there, you can go through existing easements into the project. Also, as far as being closed after 6:00 PM on Sunday, again, with the onsite manager, um, he will make sure that no one just parks a vehicle in any area where it's illegally parked, that, um, people will just have to know that they're closed at that time, and they'll have to wait till Monday morning. And the way most of these facilities operate is people know where their vehicle's going to, they know the hours of operation, and they plan around it, and it's very common for these types of facilities to have operating hours in this nature. I looked, and many of them in Reno are actually open until Sunday night at 7:00 PM, but in response to the neighborhood, we wanted to shut down an hour earlier to be able to further address their concerns with their peace and quality of, of life, so...
May I ask one more thing?
Absolutely.
Just so I make sure I understand, that when you're going into the shopping center, you're talking about right there at McDonald's, right, when you pull in?
Yes.
Okay. Right in front of that, okay.
Exactly.
Because it does seem like it's kind of a tight, sharp turn. I, I don't take that entrance very often, but...
Yeah, it's designed for fire vehicles and larger trucks. In fact, I was involved in the design of that, so I know it well.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
Just as someone who is behind them occasionally, there are very large trucks that come in to service railies.
Through that, into that entrance?
Obviously, they can make it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the public that would like to comment on this motion? If not, Commissioner Lee, did you want to make an initial motion?
Yeah. I move to approve the resolution and forward an approval to the city council for the master plan amendment associated with PCN 11029, based on findings MP One through MP Three, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So we are now, uh, we knew, have a master plan agreement, and we are set to either make a motion or discuss the two possible approvals from, uh, to the, uh, planned development handbook.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Like to make a motion? I moved forward a recommendation for PCN 03071 to tenant...
Should be, I have to type all kinds of...
Oh, yeah.
It should be 11-02.
Okay. I moved forward a recommendation for PCN 11029 to tentatively approve the planned development handbook for Crest Gate Pyramid as recommended by staff, adopting findings PD One through PD Twenty-One, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report. The tenant of approval includes that the applicant shall file the application for the final approval of the planned development within one year from the date of the city council granting tenant of approval for the planned development handbook. Due to the nature of the tenant of planned development, the planning commission does not recommend that the city council require a bond at this point in time as stated in NRS 278A.490.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not, I call for the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We will move to, um...
Oh, may I, yeah, one more question?
Yes.
So does this go on to the council then in two weeks or at their next meeting? I always get those timelines messed up.
No, based on the agendas for the timing that I just have to be submitted to city council, I think it would be the 27th of February.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. If you, uh, welcome to hear the rest of our program if you'd like, but I suspect that we may miss a few of you. Uh, item number 11, review of Sparks Planning Commission Rules of Procedure.
I can't believe they don't want to stay and hear about this.
It's hard to believe, isn't it?
Yeah, okay. Bye.
Is there, I mean, is there anything in particular that you would like to review? I've got start on, on my copy. Section Two needs to be amended. The address needs to be updated.
Uh, it's already, I already...
Oh.
And then, um, section six, if you, if you look at the portion of section six that's underlined from last time, uh, I, I think that's, um, maybe a little unclear. I, I think that's intended to be a, an or all the way through, um, but I could see how it could be read as an and, uh, so that you have to give notice to three individuals rather than one of...
Oh.
One of those people.
The underlined item in section eight.
Six.
So you're suggesting, well, I give me notice to, uh, we could put the word either in there, or...
Well, yeah, we could put one of, or, we could slap an or in between. That's what I remember.
Right.
And, uh, and I, I just see how that could be read as, as everyone.
Yeah.
Um, so we could, we could clean that up. But otherwise, I, I'm not aware of anything that needs to be updated or any issues that have arisen that would require a, a change to the rules of procedure unless, um, unless anyone else is here.
Mr. Sberber has a couple.
Yeah, I had, um, pretty much on the request, and again, with meeting with applicants, and that, that was the thing, and it's...
Which one is that?
That appears to be...
Page which?
It is page eight. It says section three in there. I think that's what...
Mm-hmm. That's the question.
Right. And I'm a little unclear with that. Would that mean that we're supposed to go and, and do that through stamp, meet with the secretary first, the applicant, or, or, what is the intended use of that?
The intended use of that, as I, as I read it, as I understand it, is that people who want to meet with you...
Right.
Should make that request through the, uh, secretary. It's, it's not a rule that's intended to put some type of burden on you as a commissioner.
And I've got somewhat mixed feelings on the thing. Obviously, I think people should be able to freely get with somebody, but the way this reads, and then you go to the chair, is what it says, and contact the chair. Is that, is that our intention here? Is that what everybody wants? You know, I've, like I say...
Well, certainly, uh, these are the commission's rules to amend.
As they sit now, and that's, I'm just questioning that if we want that.
I, I think you and I have had a discussion as to the proprietary meeting with commissioners...
Yes.
On, on items, and I, I think you know where I stand, and I'm...
Yeah.
I'm happy to share that opinion with everyone else if they choose, but, um, or if, if that's what you'd like.
Why don't you share that?
My opinion is that the First Amendment protects the right to petition your government. I'm not certain that this rule, if, if there was some type of enforcement mechanism, uh, which I don't think there is...
Right.
But I don't think that it could be defended. I think if someone wants to speak with you, they should be free to contact you...
I know, and it's...
Personally. Uh, that's, that's simply your role as a, as a, as a public representative.
And as long as, uh, any commissioner feels like that, that meeting needs to be publicly disclosed?
That, you know, again, uh, that is entirely up to you. It is my opinion that it is a constitutional right enjoyed by all Americans, so to the extent that it doesn't cross the boundaries, in your opinion, of Nevada's ethics and government law, um, I, I don't believe that those meetings need to be disclosed.
So do we want the paragraph in there?
Maybe.
Do you see that?
I do see it.
You know, you were saying that if the applicant wants to meet with, like Mitch, at, at some project somewhere, so he would get ahold of Mitch, Mitch would go out there. In the meantime, the applicant got ahold of me, I went out there, so we had four or five, um, commissioners out there at once.
Well, that's, of course, a, that's, of course, a, an interesting problem.
Yeah, I mean, again...
And I, I think originally when we came up with this, that was the, at that particular point in time, we were getting inundated with people calling all seven of us and wanting to meet either individually or together, and none of us at that time felt comfortable making that decision, so we decided that it should go through the secretary at the office, and then through the chair to decide whether we were going to meet together or individually or not at all.
In groups of two or three or whatever, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's...
So that's the background.
I mean, I, I, I think part of the difficulty with the position you presently hold is that you have to keep track of things like that. Uh, you know, the open meeting law, of course, um, is there for a reason, but just because a quorum of you is present somewhere, doesn't necessarily mean you've run afoul of the open meeting law. You just have to be more careful than you might otherwise be in terms of discussing a project, potentially reaching some type of straw poll decision. That's, of course, not allowed under the open meeting law.
Right.
Whether or not, Commissioner Sberber, whether or not the rule remains for that purpose is a decision for the commission to make.
I'd be fine getting rid of it.
Well, it certainly has not been, i- if this has been in there in the past, it's not been, because I think, we all know that we've gone to projects to take a look and talk to folks and try to just generate enough information to make a good decision.
Sure, right.
We all do that and should do it, I think.
Right.
So...
Like Mitch was saying, though, a long time ago, they wanted to take us to lunch and give us wine and...
There was, there was more of an attempt than to...
Yeah.
To get in, get in our head and about the, the project at hand versus just providing us with basic information and answering our questions that we may have had.
Right. And, and, and whatever decision is made, there's nothing pre- precluding a, a commissioner from explaining to people that your personal preference is that scheduling for this type of meeting be run through the commission secretary.
So it, it sounds to me like that there's at least some interest in eliminating the section three from our, from our rules and procedures. Is that... Am I getting that?
Yeah, I don't like it. You know, I don't like questioning things. It'd be better to not have it in there, in my opinion, if we're saying it's okay not to go through it.
We can take it out.
I, I'd like to.
Do you have any thoughts?
Well, I, I agree with, you know, uh, your legal counsel in terms of, uh, the right to meet with anyone at any time, essentially. Um, again, going back to the history of this, I, you know, I think it, it became maybe so, maybe overwhelming to have to deal with these requests, uh, and, you know, by agreeing to this as a body, uh, you had something to fall back on. Uh, if you don't feel you, you know, you need that anymore, then, you know, at least for the present time, it, you know, it may be unnecessary, and so, you know, you can simply choose to, you know, if you, if a request is made and you prefer not to do it, you simply can decline the request. You, you have that, that option, so, I mean, I don't see any issue with, with, with taking it out if it, you know, if the planning commission of the body is comfortable with doing so.
And I really do believe that's, I mean, that was the intention originally. I, I was going, oh, I, you know, quit calling me all you people. I thought it was really popular.
I mean, there, there was a time that we were getting calls, you know, four, five times a week.
Yeah.
Right.
But, you know, the, the atmosphere and the comment was much different at that point, and I think now, I think we're pretty much all in agreement that we could probably take it out and see what happens, because we'll, we'll address it again in another 11 months, so...
And like he, and like Armando said, we can always just say no.
Right.
Right. Does that require a motion to delete that section?
I, I think it should.
Yeah. Jackie?
Um, well, let's see. How about I make a motion to, um, we, we want to approve these rules of procedure, right, with the, with removing, um, section three in article six. Is that the way to say it?
Yep. And changing article one, section two.
And changing...
Article one, section two, the address that we...
Oh, article one, section two, to the current address...
Yes.
For City Hall.
I'll second that.
All right.
And did we want to do with anything with section six? I mean, on, on the requirement of, uh, give a notice to the commission with chairman and commissioner vice chairman and, or, and/or, or...
Isn't that a grammatical change as opposed to...
Yes, it's, it's just a cleanup, that's a cleanup.
Okay, okay, so, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
But to be clear for the record, it's the commission's intention that it is an or. Any one of those three.
Right.
Yes, or, any one of those three.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the rules of procedure as amended for article one, section two, and section, whatever that was. Page eight. Article six, section three to be eliminated.
Right.
That's right. That's what I...
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. We have come to a public comment. It's a general public comment, items limited to...
Chairman Volz.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have that, uh, we, I forgot, I have the, I have the old agenda, and we have a new agenda here. Um, item number 12, appointment of a planning commissioner to a committee to review responses to the zoning code assessment request for proposals.
I think they thought we were...
Okay. Am I right? Chairman Volz, um, what we're asking the planning commission to do is to appoint a, uh, one of, uh, your body to a committee, uh, to review responses to a, uh, an RFP that the City of Sparks has issued, uh, to do an analysis of our zoning code. As you may recall, the, um, the, the city council, uh, had directed staff to, uh, move forward with, uh, trying to do some streamlining and identifying, uh, other aspects of our code that maybe warrant changing in order to, um, facilitate, uh, development, uh, in a more streamlined fashion. Uh, we have been out to RFP. The RFP closed today, actually. Uh, I'm not sure how many responses we received, but, uh, what we're proposing to do is to form a committee of five. There would be one city council member, one member of the planning commission, uh, one member from the, from one of the private consulting firms, uh, planning consulting firms in, in the community, and then two staff to, uh, review those proposals, and then ultimately make a recommendation to the city council for a word of a contract. So, uh, we're looking for, uh, this body to nominate one of yourselves to participate in that process if you'd like.
Does anyone have a particular interest in doing that?
Wonderful.
I nominate Barbara.
I'll second that.
There's a nomination and a second to appoint Commissioner Sanders to the planning commission committee, uh, listed in item 12. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and, uh, Jim Rundle will be contacting you and, uh, to schedule the, uh, the meeting and to get the, uh, the responses to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, we are on item 13, public comment. General public, and, uh, has up to... Now, we are on item 13, public comment. Uh, general public can, uh, has up to three minutes to talk about any item that, uh, that, uh, does not appear on the agenda. Anyone in the public who'd like to speak, come forward, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Cathy Brandhorse, Lisa Marie Presley, John Benay Ramsey, John Steele, and I'm also the United States President. Um, I just wanted to, uh, let you know, uh, when I left off, I do live at the Sundance Motel. Uh, it's located in Reno, Nevada. Um, I just heard, you know, my tapes, uh, from the last, uh, one on number eight, and I think that's very unlawful to use my tapes. Uh, I am on the planning commission, and, um, I don't want my tapes to be used by anybody. They should use their own voice, their own, uh, decisions, their own voice, too. Um, so I just wanted to mention that. And, uh, also, I would say, you know, my tapes were stolen to use in this chambers. Um, I just wanted to let you know, um, you cannot steal somebody's property and say you're going to sell it, like my property was mentioned on number eight again. And, um, I, um, prefer you not to do this, you know, uh, by stealing rent money. And, uh, I just wanted to let you know, um, also, I was living on Lake Street in Reno, Nevada. A body did fall through my ceiling because he was soaking in his own blood. And, um, the reasons are because they are child molesters, uh, they are, uh, child murders, and they also come from Mexico. And, uh, I just wanted to mention, too, those child molesters were evicted from, uh, the property on Lake Street. They cannot be there anymore, but unfortunately, we have Trish, Julie, Misty, and the Mexican lady that also works at, um, at the county in Reno. And they put these people back together to put them back on the street by using body parts after they get their lethal injections. And, um, I just wanted to let you know that's been happening quite often. And also, I just wanted to let you know, the body that fell through my ceiling was Scott. I don't know his last name. And Gene is his brother. He's 12 years old. Scott is only seven years old.
I hope that wasn't Scott Barnes.
Yeah. No, I just got an email from him.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Comments from commissioners? Uh, welcome again, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey, Mitch.
I, I have one question, I guess. What's the status of our seventh commissioner, Armando, or anyone who knows?
Actually, you don't know anything for them. Uh, it's my understanding that the mayor has received at least, uh, one application. Uh, I don't know whether he's, uh, when or he's going to be moving forward with, uh, asking the city council to appoint someone, but, um, I, I think he's, uh, I'm not sure on the status, so what we can do is, uh, check and, uh, maybe shoot an email out to you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else comments? If not, motion adjourned, accepted.
As part of the program called Complete Streets, an overall effort to improve the look of city streets, Work on Vista also raised a landscape for medians. It's looking good and it's green. Irrigation for the new landscaping uses recycled water. All this work was paid for by RTC 5 funds, approved by voters back in 2008.
And I want to thank the Sparks voters also, and the voters of Walsh County, because when they voted for RTC 5, that's where the funds came from, and everybody knows it's about money right now. And it just goes to show you, if you explain something well enough to the voters, they're smart enough to say, you know what, that is a good deal.
Another sore spot for drivers is Pyramid Highway and the McCarran intersection.